Meeting to order at 7:06 PM and can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. Which is standing. One nation. With liberty and justice.
Rory, did we have any public come in, comments come in for the Board of Selectment meeting?
I have not seen any.
Okay. Great. Can I have a motion to approve the meetings from the regular meeting December 1st, 2020? So moved by Trish, second by Bob. All in favor?
Hi.
Just one note, Karen Robinson, her name is spelled C A R O N. It was, there were a couple of times in the document where it was spelled K A R I N.
Thank you. First select woman's report. So not a real busy week, but a busy week. Since our last meeting, we are starting to put together workshops for our budget, budgets for each department. Drafts are due to us by the 18th. I think that's, that was a Friday. They're due to us. Then we're going to start meeting with each department head to go over the plan and areas. This Saturday, I had the opportunity along with Chris Sleckman Bowen to, and a couple of our little town residents to actually go to the Tignu Dam to see the issues that we're having with the fish bypass and the fish ladder. It was very informative. Kevin Zach, if you, if you haven't seen his presentation, it is now on the first selectmen's webpage. It's quite interesting to see the disrepair that that dam is in and the damages and how the fish ladder itself was not designed properly and is not working. We spent all this money, the state spent all this money for our fish bypass that we have right in downtown Seymour. And it can't even be used because the ladder is not being used. So we're going to be working with the Valley Cog. I know, Rob, you wanted to go and unfortunately you could not go. I'm sure there is going to be more visits to that site and I'm hoping to get our state reps involved as well. To see if they can get us help from, from the state end as well as the, as well as the federal government. Saturday I'll be taking, I'll be taking part in the reeds across America. That will be at the St. Michael Cemetery in Derby, starting at 11:45 AM. I'll be reading the names as Mayor Zeke and Mayor Cassetti are laying the reeds on the veterans' graves. We had our first menorah lighting in Seymour, which was really big. Not really big, but it's a really big thing to me because it, it made such the few families that we have in town so happy and they felt so a part of it. And it was, it was interesting and educational to see this being done. First Sleckman Bowen was up, Bowen was, Sleckman Bowen and Sleckman Van Egan were there as well to celebrate that. Um, that's about all I have. Item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding the Economic Development Director. In your packet, Chris Pelosi had gone through the job description of the EDC director and he sort of redlined it. Did everybody have a chance to go over it and look through it? Did anybody have any comments on it?
Yeah, Marie, can you remind, can you, I don't know if we, I'm sure that we did, remind me at least when we planned on doing something with this?
So I don't, I don't know if we had a date set in mind as to when we're going to do something about this, but our plan was that we had the money for the EDC director put away in our budget. We had looked to see if we really needed an EDC director. And I think we, as a committee, had said beginning of the year, when Sheila O'Malley was going to come in, that yes, we wanted to talk to Sheila O'Malley. And Chris Bowen and Rory, you can jump in on this one. And we said, but they needed, the EDC director needed to know what their responsibility was. And the committee, the committee, the EDC committee put together a list of tasks that they wanted them to do. Not a true job description for the EDC director. It was more or less of a task and we said, well, if we want to know if we're going to hire somebody, if we're going to interview Sheila O'Malley, or if we're going to interview this one, or we're going to interview that one. I keep bringing up Sheila O'Malley because that was a name that was given to us by the EDC. That's why I keep bringing up her name. We said we wanted to have a job description. So if we're going to interview somebody, if we're going to speak to somebody about this position, whether it be in January of 2021 or the end of 2021 or 2022, we wanted to make sure this person coming in knew what their responsibilities, their duties entailed, and they had a clear and concise description of what we wanted them to do.
Okay.
So that's why we took the job description that the EDC put together. We had Chris Pelosi put it together as if it was a job description, as well as looking throughout the descriptions of an EDC director, bring it to this board because this is the hiring board, not the EDC. This is the hiring board because it's a town employee and the town employee reports to the first selectmen, not a bond.
I personally don't have any comments to the job description right now. I think depending on when, because right now I know between COVID halfway through the year, things are pretty tight for the town. So I definitely don't think in this budget season, my opinion is no, you know, we shouldn't be looking at it at the moment, but it, just in case something changes or, you know, just to see where we're standing and where we're at closer to the time that we're looking to actually hire, we might want to just revisit it. Not entirely, but just close to that time.
Yeah. From an action standpoint, Trish, this was strictly to be prepared for the role, not in so much to make the decision to hire for the role. So.
Right. I understand that. I'm saying when, just in case, I don't know when we're going to be ready to actually hire and just to make sure that nothing has changed or evolved between now and then, depending how much time goes by, we might want to take a quick look at the job description when we're ready.
Would it be, would it be a harm to, to look at it now, at least have a good?
No, I already read it. I'm fine with it as it stands today myself, but anything could happen between now and say July, August, or whenever we do decide to hire, but I don't, I think it's fine as it stands at the moment.
I agree with not hiring right now, Trish, not, not in this, not at this point in time in the middle of COVID, but I would agree to have some sort of a draft form that we could step off with and saying, yep, this is good. Now here it is, you know, June, let's see where we are. Let's see if we need to add to it. Let's see.
I agree.
This way we'll be prepared to pull the trigger once we all make the decision that we can spend the budget. I think Chris did a really good job of capturing what our thoughts were and, and, you know, and making a true, you know, workable document that we'll be able to hire somebody from. So I think Chris did a really good job.
Yes, I was happy with that. Rob?
I'm sorry.
Well done, Chris. Sorry. Rob?
Uh, yeah, I'm fine with the document. I understand Trish's concern, making sure we're not doing anything just yet. Having the document, all agreeing on it, I'd like to know how everyone feels about the potential for Chris. We discussed Chris as HR, putting it out as a job. I know a lot of times job postings will go up that may say job opening in June of next year, something like that. If there's any reason we, as long as we're all agreed on the criteria, start possibly having Chris put feelers out or straight out job postings for a job that we know we're not going to fill for another six months. So people could at least start showing their interest towards things like that if possible. Thoughts on that?
I, I think if we do that, that, you know, somebody may show interest for it in January, but then we tell them that we're not hiring maybe until July, they may find a job by then.
Well, I would make that part of it. And I would imagine that's part of the posting is saying this is a job that would be available earliest June 2021, you know, not necessarily anything more than that.
I, I like where you're, I like where you're headed, Rob. You might, we might want to think of it a different way because once we make the decision to hire, we'll, we'll probably make that a, a few months ahead of when we're going to get someone. Um, I, I, I think, and again, maybe I'm, we can do it at that time. I think we just got to get to this point and then make a decision amongst all of us to say, okay, from a budget, you know, perspective and what our expectations are, when do we think we're going to roll this, you know, roll this out? I, I don't want to, I wouldn't put it out there to say we're going to, this job is going to be filled next year. I'm not sure that we'll get the right candidates, I think. Is anybody looking for a job is going to want it within a certain window of time. So three to six months, you know, that's kind of the time window I'm thinking. Versus I, you know, I can't have this job till next year. So I'd rather know that we're going to hire for the job and then post it. And, you know, maybe be a little proactive about when we think we're going to be able to have a budget that makes sense to do that, you know, at that time.
Yeah, the negotiations for these can sometimes drag out and be back and forths. So I, I don't imagine this is going to be posted on Monday and by Friday, you know, somebody's lined up. But yeah, it's, I have less experience with the hiring process on that level. So I'm, I'm going to default to whoever has more.
We get, we may get more takers than you think with respect to COVID and people, you know, jobs changing and.
Other towns downsizing.
Chris Bowen.
The first thought, first thing I want to say is I, I really like the changes that Mr. Pelosi made to this document, the red lines, that really clarified things going forward. With regard to Sleckman Van Egan's comment, I think to put out something saying that this might be open at a certain amount of time. It reduces our flexibility for a board that meets every other week. This is something that we can easily put on agenda. Once we know that we, we're in a position where we can go forward. In addition, we have to address the budgetary issue. This description is really for a full-time position. Right now, the only thing in our budget is the $33,000, $5,000 salary, which is not sufficient for this job description that would have to be moved from a discretionary budget in the first place. So with regard to putting out feelers now, I think so much can change in six months that I don't think it's really worthwhile to do that at this moment.
Any other discussion?
Emery?
Sorry.
Yeah, um, I agree with the general comments in terms of, you know, just, just have it ready to go, chamber it, because we don't know what's going to happen three, six, nine months down the road with this virus. I'd hate to put it out prematurely. So let, let's see what happens first, but, but we know there's a need. We know we need to fill it and I think we should just be patient, you know, we can shine it up, we'll have it ready to go. I'm sure Chris Pelosi can answer, you know, when the better time to put this out there is, maybe anytime. It may be fall, it may be spring, I don't know. But like Rob was saying, I would defer to, you know, Chris Pelosi, because that's his expertise and he could advise us, you know, when he thinks we should do it. And I, I'm not going to question him. You know, he's our HR person and let's go forth. And I'm sure there'll, there'll be some great candidates and hiring is everything. So let's, let's hopefully, let's, let's get a good hire. Let's get the candidates and let's hire the person that's best for Seymour. Thanks.
Pat.
Yeah, um, first of all, I agree that I think we should wait. And again, you know, just to reiterate, we just don't know what's going to happen. Let's wait. What's the rush? My other comment is, is, is Chris going to put together a formal document based on what we've been presented with?
Yeah. So all this was, was a draft copy, a redline copy. Once.
Yeah, that's all the answer to the question.
Once we, once we say, yep, this is what we want, then he will put it in the proper format for a job, a job description.
This will go to our standard job role descriptions, correct?
We talked about that last month, you know, getting the date it was adopted, who approved it, you know, that's our footprint, our footprint moving forward for other job descriptions. So I don't have any problem. I think Chris did a good job. Again, my, my only concern is, you know, we don't know where we're going to be in three months. We don't know where we're going to be in six months. So I, I would think we should hold off.
Would it, would it be best, is so, is it safe to say that, yes, we're going to hold off on hiring, but we want to move forward with putting this in a job description form the way it is? This way, when we're ready to go, we just pull the trigger on it.
Yes, this was getting the preliminary work done to be ready to pull the trigger when we're ready to pull the trigger. So we wanted this to be.
And we can have a final read before it goes out.
Absolutely.
Home at a time, but yeah, to see if there's any time sensitive things that we could add, but otherwise rate would be ready to go.
I have a motion to push this board so that Chris Pelosi can put this into a job description form. Motion by Bob Finley, second by Rob Van Egan. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay. Discussion and take possible action regarding non-union pay plan. Okay, in your budget, in your budget, sorry, in your packet is the non-union pay plan from Chris. And basically all this is, is we're going, you know, we've, we've gone through it. All we want to do is make sure we have this, everybody's okay with it, and we put it together as a living, breathing document. Any questions, comments?
Are we going to vote on this?
Yep. I need a, I need a motion to vote on it.
Is this, is this going to be under rep control too?
Yes.
Okay.
So do you have a motion to move this forward?
A motion that we, regarding the non-union pay plan.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Bob. Discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion carries. Appointments, um, in your package, we have Gary Populous, Parks Commission, reappointment for two year.
So move.
By Al Bruno, second by Bob Finley. All in favor? For Chair votes aye, motion carries. Board of Ethics, Al Bruno, appointment for years.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Bob Finley. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Bruno abstains, motion carries. Six, uh, zero, one, note Al Bruno's extension. Board of Ethics, Tom Lapadlia, I hope I said that right, four years. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Chris, second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair votes ayes. Board of Ethics, Stefan Behunia, four-year appointment.
So moved.
And by Rob Van Egan, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, seven, zero. Board of Ethics, Kathy Verlich, four-year appointment.
So moved.
Motion by Bob, second by Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Board of Ethics, Bob Finley.
So moved.
Motion by Pat Lombardi, second by Chris Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Obseptions.
Have stayed.
Motion carries, six, zero, one, motion, note Bob Finley's abstention. Fire Commissioner Pete St. Perry, three-year term.
So move.
Motion by Al Bruno, second by Bob Finley. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays. Abstains. Motion carries. Seven, zero. EDC, Roxanne Finley, three-year appointment. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Al, second by Trish. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven, zero. Tax refunds and abatements in your package. You'll see the tax refunds and abatements. Is there? No. Okay. We have no transfers. Correspondence. Okay, I don't think I need a motion for the tax collector.
Yeah, there is a tax abatement report.
There is. Yep, I just found, sorry.
There.
Okay, make sure there are no issues. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion by first, second by Al. Motion, okay, seven, zero, there's no transfers. Correspondence. Uh, Kwame. Rob, can you help me say it?
Kwame.
Kwame Dibana.
Dunbar.
Dunbar. Um, he is resigning from the Board of Finance. Bill, I'm ready to notify you, my formal resignation from the Board of Finance. Thank you for the opportunities for professional personal development presented to me during my time here and enjoyed serving the time with everyone on the board. I've learned a lot during my short time on the board and appreciate the support I've received. I believe that we will, there will be a name put forward to replace him. We'll be getting that name from Stefan. Rory?
Yep, we'll read that to him. Actually, I believe the Board of Finance has an opportunity to replace him for 30 days before the selectmen can step in.
That's correct.
Thank you, guys. I would hope that they would do that now that the budget season is coming. Soon. Okay. Did we get any public comment in?
I have not received any.
Okay. Selectmen comments? I will start with Mr. Lombardi since he is the first top of my screen.
Very good. Uh, first of all, we all know we're looking for a pretty good snowstorm here. I had the opportunity to spend some time with our Public Works Director on Monday morning. Took a tour of the facility, equipment. Preparation was taking place for our snow operations. We also discussed this, our meeting on Monday night and they're ready to roll. I think we all know that, you know, the biggest problem that they're going to have is with a lot of snowfall at the rate it's going to be falling and with the heavy winds drifting is going to become a problem. So it may take a little longer to get some, get some of the roads open. So residents have to be patient. I know they're going to do a good job. Other than that, I'd just like to wish each and every one of you and your families Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, and stay well, stay safe and wear your mask. COVID hit my family. It's real, it's out there. Stay safe, stay healthy. That's all I have.
Trish?
Um, I always love the Christmas season. So this has really been my one and only comment to last few meetings, but I don't know if anyone has had a chance to go out from the Board of Selectment to see some of the entrance in the holiday lights contest, but wow, even people who haven't entered, it's, it has been such a nice, considering I've been in the house way too often as well as everybody else. It's been a nice few hours out of the house. Um, I know nobody's really going to be able to get out with the snow the next couple of nights, but you know, when they do clear the roads and they always do a great job, please enjoy, take your time. It's exciting to see how many people entered. We've had, I've lost count, but it's over 50.
Sixty-one.
Fifty-one.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. Wow, that, that's over. Yep. So, but people have done a great job and what's been very nice is some people have been outside and they're very excited about it. And I think it's, you know, brought a lot of joy to people and I love that at the Christmas season. So I just want to wish everybody. It's exciting to see us celebrating diversity and so Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a whole slew of them, but just enjoy the holiday season with your family, whether it's in person, online, and everybody stay happy and happy. And on to what I am certain is going to be a much better 2021. Thank you.
You're welcome. Christopher Bowen.
First off, I was honored to be a part of the first night lighting of menorah on, at the Broad Street Park. I'm not, I don't follow the religion, but it was still wonderful to see the small but intimate gathering of the lighting. It's the first one I've personally attended in, you know, my 40 years. So I, it was just an honor to be a part of it. And thank you to Jody Gerstehaber, I think I got that right, for initiating that conversation to get that going. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday. And please be safe. Please take precautions against COVID. The virus does not know it's the holidays nor does it care. And have a wonderful season. Let's take account of everything that we have going on now that's good. Uh, let's take account of all the blessings that we have. This is, count your blessings, this tends to be a generic statement, but I think it's really applicable this year after the year we've had in 2020 and I'll see everybody in 2021.
Awesome. Rob Van Egan, we have a baby coming soon.
Got a baby coming soon. So I want to get this year over with as quickly as possible to get into 2021, echoing the hopes that it's going to be a better year. But for the remainder that we have here, please, everyone be safe. Thank you to this board for making this such a pleasant year despite the circumstances outside. So, and as everyone else said, with the weather, please be safe. We're all going to get a chance to see these beautiful houses and thank you to all the residents who participated to try to bring a little joy and cheer into everyone's houses. It's going to be a wonderful thing. I'm so thankful to Al for putting that together. Uh, thank you all and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Finley.
Having a senior, Finley, you're muted.
Of course. Of course I am. Love seeing the town lights, uh, very happy to see the menorah. That was, that was a fantastic add to the town. Um, I love, I love the holiday season myself, um, and, and you could recognize the town lights this year have been tremendous. There's been a lot of houses, not just the ones that entered, a lot more people put lights out this year and y- you can see it in the holiday season. Um, with the snowstorm coming, uh, you know, we all talk about a lot of different things, try and help our neighbors. Um, try not to lift loads, be careful when you're shoveling. The town's got to be very careful. Everybody out there shoveling heavy snow. Uh, we are going to have ice there, so make sure you two take your proper precautions when you're shoveling. Uh, lift with your legs, not with your back and, uh, have a happy holiday to everybody.
Thank you, Al Bruno.
I just wanted to, um, make sure I give a shout out to Tim Connors and our Public Works Department. Uh, I've been running up at the high school, uh, on the weekends or in the evenings. And I noticed that things were getting a little, um, there was a lot of garbage up there, that the garbage cans had tipped over, things blowing all over, it just, just need to be picked up and get ready for the season. And I texted Tim and, and Tony and they work so well together and they, they, it's all done. Now they're going to try to get some heavier garbage cans up there. The custodian's going to empty them from the high school. It's just, we have a multimillion dollar field up there and it should look that way. Um, it's just a beautiful area and I've really enjoyed, uh, running up there and getting exercise with my family during the, during the pandemic. So I've taken it up and, and, uh, it's great, but I wanted to give them a shout out. And I just want to let Van Egan know that, you know, I'm still running, so let's go, son. Let's go, let's get out there. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to thank, uh, Pat for your, uh, Public Work Board, uh, leadership. I, I know it's, it's kind of easy lifting with our Public Works Board, they're so great, but you know, thanks for doing that and giving us an update and going to meet with, um, Tony on Monday. That's fantastic. That's, uh, taking it, taking it by the horns. Um, also want to make sure we thank Alex and his committee for the Holiday Lights Contest idea. You know, this is a town that really values, uh, kids. It's one thing that my wife and I, uh, are always amazed by. Seymour loves its kids. We have all kinds of parades and activities for children. And we really are about our kids, uh, whether they're, you know, ours or not, you know, Seymour just loves its kids. And it was sad to have that canceled this year, but you know, to Trish's point, to build on her comment, we've been going around the neighborhood and it's like, you know, the Festival of Lights down at the, the point in, in, in East Haven or something. It, it, it's wonderful to see all that light and, and all that hope. It's just really wonderful to have in this time of year when it's really dark and reminds me of a story my wife used to, uh, tell all the time. She did her junior year abroad in Stockholm, Sweden, because she's, she has Swedish blood and she went there her junior year. And she said that, you know, that there, it's dark, I don't know, nineteen hours of the day or twenty hours of the day. So the, the Swedes make their own light. There's candles all over the city, um, in Stockholm. And it just gave me a warm little moment like, hey, you know, we're creating our own light in a very dismal year. You know, we're still trying to stay positive and doing the right thing. So i- it's appreciated, you know, so tell Alex, thank you, Trish. And our, our neighbors are to be applauded, you know, get your lights up. Um, and I think, I think that's it. Just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Alex has done, and the Parade Committee has done an absolute great idea. And when they came up with this idea, you know, we didn't know how many people were going to go with it, but to have sixty-one houses in more people.
Seventy-one.
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 Seventy-one. I know I did not use seventy-one houses yesterday. I think Nicole and I maybe got twenty done yesterday.
I think today was the last day people could enter, but there were ten, ten or eleven more people last night. I was just like, oh my gosh, this is a lot of houses everyone's got to go see, so.
I, I think this is great because just the cheer, you know, I felt like the cheermeister driving around, looking at it from the Grinch. You know, the cheermeister and it's like Little Whoville and everybody's decorating their houses. And even the, the street pools are getting decorated. And just to see the community come together, and I hope this carries on into the years to come. And I hope it's a great tradition for our kids and for the little kids to see. And I just hope it keeps building on the community and, and it doesn't end this year. I hope we, we do it next year and I hope we have the parade. But he did a wonderful job, Trish. Please tell Alex thank you, because you know, I'm sure he's sleeping now, getting ready for the big snow. But thank you, Trish, and thank you, Trish, for all your help in helping him. Rich, do you have anything?
I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Enjoy the holiday season. Stay safe, be well, and, and with the, the blessings of, uh, of the vaccines that have been developed.
Rich is breaking up.
We're going to put the virus behind us.
Yes.
And have a much better year. So God bless.
Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chris Bowen, second by Trish Dank. All in favor? Motion carries. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, everybody. I love your tie bowing.
Thank her.